Hello and Happy New Years. I'd like to welcome you all to the regularly scheduled January 6, 2014, meeting of the Planning Commission. Would you like to connect the roll call, please?
Commissioner Cooper.
President.
Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
Commissioner Niblin.
Here.
Commissioner Viterlas.
Here.
Chair Brown.
Commissioner Cooper, would you lead us in the salute to the flag, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next on to administrative business, do I have a motion for approval of the order of agenda?
Sumot.
Second. Let's take it to a vote. Motion passes five, four, zero against. Next up, approval of minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve that last minute, so I don't have any comments.
Thank you. Second. Thank you. And a vote. The motion passes unanimously. Next up is designation of liaison to the city council meeting.
There is no Planning Commission-related business on the next council agenda, so there's no need for representative.
Great, thank you. There are no consent items on the agenda. There is one public hearing item, CDP 34114. This coastal development permit filed by Daniel Ewald on behalf of the owners, David and Catherine Dwaras, to construct a new three-story, single-family residence of approximately 2,600 square feet on a vacant lot at 1375 Livingston Avenue. Recommended sequoia status exempt. Proposed action approved as condition. Would either the agent or the owner like to speak? You have 10 minutes to speak on behalf of this project.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
We typically do staff report first.
Did I miss that?
You did.
There you go. Let's have the staff report first.
Thank you, Chair Brown and Commissioners, for your consideration at this time as a proposal to construct a new three-story, single-family residence of approximately 2,600 square feet and 35 feet in height on a sloped lot of 5,000 square feet. One thing I do want to note is on the staff report and on part of sheet A 3.1 of the plans, it shows that the building height is 34 feet. It's actually 35 feet. There was a typing error that needed to be corrected, and I didn't catch it. The proposed building design is contemporary in feel and includes varied setbacks, materials, design features, and decorum arrangements to provide visual interest and break up the bulk and massing of the building. Other project features include a green roof over the garage, rainwater harvesting system, and use of landscape elements that would integrate with the lot and the home and complement the overall streetscape. The project meets all of the city's zoning standards and meets the city's design guidelines. It's comparable to other homes in the area in terms of size, bulk, mass, and situation on the lot, and will not impact coastal access or coastal resources. Staff believes that the findings can be made to grant the requested permit and is therefore recommending approval.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Is that Commissioner Cooper?
I just had one comment, and I think it's been addressed. That was on the conditions for approval. It's item number 17, which states, existing curb sidewalk and street. There is no existing curb, so I think we were going to revise or attempt to revise that in the next go-around to say if there is an existing curb, we're going to revise it. But in this case, there is none, so provide a curb and gutter. It is in the plans.
Very well, thank you. Any other questions for staff? I have one on the impervious surface area. It states that what's required is one LID measure at greater than 2,500 square feet, and what's proposed in the project is seems to be less than that at 2,154 square feet. Could you explain what that measure is about?
Per our stormwater management regulations that the city has to abide by, we have to make sure that in any single-family residence that replaces or adds 2,500 square feet of impervious surface that they do a low-impact development measure. And those measures are things like rainwater harvesting, adding pervious pavement and things like that, redirecting downspouts. In this case, they showed that the impervious surface coverage was less, but nonetheless, they did incorporate more measures than would have been needed had it exceeded the threshold.
Great, thank you.
Could I just ask, make sure I understand what you're saying? What you're saying is because of the amount of impervious surface, they didn't actually need to include an LID, but they did in any event.
Right.
Thank you.
Great, seeing no further questions. Now is the correct time for the applicant or the owners to speak on behalf of the project. You have 10 minutes.
Good evening. I want to thank everybody for having us here tonight. My wife and I, Catherine, I'm David, before we go any further, we're really thrilled to be here tonight. We have been living in the city, well, both of us have been living in the city for going on and off for like 15 years. I actually have lived in Pacifica before. I was down in, I lived on Grand Avenue and Danman Avenue on the point from about 2000 to 2004, which is why I'm familiar with the neighborhood. And a couple of years ago, my wife and I had our first child, our only child to date. And, you know, after a few years, I think both of us were kind of in agreement that we wanted to get out of the city, that kind of, I guess, for lack of a better term, you know, the, there just was kind of nothing left for us there. So I've always, I grew up by the water. I grew up in Rhode Island, which is a big water state. And I kind of always knew in the back of my mind when I left Pacifica that I was going to be back someday. And so we looked around. We were looking up and down the coast between here and Half Moon Bay for about a year, and we just, it was a combination of not finding the right place. And then when we'd find the right place, it was also the right place for about five or six other people, and bidding wars and all that. So my wife was down in Lindemar with my daughter one day, and she was driving around. She saw this vacant lot for sale in Livingston, and we jumped on it. And, I don't know, that's how we got here. And, I mean, we couldn't be more excited. We've really tried to get to know the neighborhood, which is, I mean, one thing, just immediately, I mean, I think my wife was a little more nervous than I was because I had been down here, I know some of the people. But, you know, I could say that we lived in Bernal Heights for like three years. We're already now renting on the point, I should say that. We're up on Sterling Avenue. We found a little house to rent in the interim. And we've already met and talked to and had meaningful interaction with more neighbors in three months than we did in like three years living in Bernal Heights. So I know that that really set my wife's mind at ease as soon as we got there. I mean, we took our kid to the Halloween fair at the firehouse, and we went to the potluck right November, December. But anyway, I digress. We're super stoked to be here, and we're just hopeful that this goes through and we're able to get this house underway, and we can really start to put our roots down in the neighborhood. Just as far as the whole design and how we got here, I think the staff report pretty well summed it up, that in addition to meeting some of the neighborhood, some of the neighbors, you know, we really, especially with the uphill owner, who incidentally is who we bought the lot from, is the person who's got the land right above us, you know, we intentionally set our house back further back than we had to because we noticed that kind of the architectural center point, I guess, of her house was her front kitchen, where she has like a curved front corner that gets the sweeping views of the bay. So we, like, I think in one of our, in our first meeting with Daniel, we made mention that we want to make sure that we don't just stick our finger in that woman's eyes, you know? And then as far as the landscaping goes, that stuff goes not just for us, to make a more peaceful environment in and around the home, but also so that our neighbors downhill and also, I guess, side hill to the east who have their frontage on Grand Ave, that they would, that they would have kind of a softer, a softer home to look at, I guess, is one way to put it. So, I don't know. That's my little thing. And this is Daniel. He's the architect.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Daniel Ewald with ETA Architecture. I just have a couple of things to say very quickly. This proposal is for a moderately sized home, and it's not about maxing out the site. It's about really just making what they need. And we understand that there was a previous permit that was approved that was sort of larger and kind of was doing that. There's relatively simple massing, and the building steps up the hill, and it's broken up in order to do that. Dave mentioned that the house is significantly set back to respect the primary views from the uphill neighbor. And it's also narrower than it could be on the lot to respect the neighbors to the east. The proposal includes a large amount of natural materials like wood and stone and incorporates a natural color scheme, which are represented by the renderings. Heavier materials like stone kind of ground the building into the land, and lighter materials like glass and exposed wood, exposed wood-structured decks provide kind of an honest expression of materials. The proposal exceeds all the green building requirements and includes rainwater retention, a living roof, and mostly permeable surfaces. And that's it. Thank you. And the homeowners and I are available for any questions that you may have.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the Commissioners? Commissioner Cooper.
Thank you. I really appreciate the design. I think it's a wonderful design and a wonderful layout. It's a very beautiful home. But I do have some questions that I'd like to bring up. It looks like there's quite a bit of excavation that's going to be taken from this site. How much off-haul are you going to actually be doing from this site?
It's actually still being worked through with the civil engineer, but there is not actually going to be very much off-hauling. What is being excavated is being used on the site.
Okay. The other question I had is that this site seems to slope down from the front all the way to the back corner. How are you handling that runoff to protect those neighbors that are, that are going to be over there? Are you collecting all the water? And then, I know you had a rain barrel there, but what happens if it overflows, and where does that go?
Yeah, there are, there are rainwater retention measures, and there is an overflow that then goes back into the rear yard. The rear yard, again, because the house is only 25 feet wide at the, in the back portion, so there's a significant area to be able to distribute the water into the land, and most of the surfaces there are permeable.
So what happens if we get a heavy rain and your roof drains?
Catch basin back there, too, buried underground, right? And then, but the whole backyard basically is going to be grass. So I think what Daniel's trying to say is that we're going to have a catch, a catch basin down in that low corner, but that whole back portion of the lot, there's going to be no concrete, it's going to be trees and grass, so...
Right. I would just be concerned about the runoff from the roof and from the other areas of the home.
Sure. The garage does have a living roof, so that should at least minimize the runoff there. Of course, it won't always capture all of it. But the runoff from both the upper roof and the lower roof first go into the catchment system, and then they distribute into the catch basement in the rear.
Okay. What is your schedule for this project?
Well, I didn't mention this, too. I'm actually a contractor, so I'm going to be the owner and the builder, obviously because we're, we have a home in the city. I'm redoing that now. We're going to be putting that on the market in about a month. I'd like to get going, I mean, if everything goes okay here tonight and you guys are satisfied with what we're doing, I'd like to turn it over to building and leave it up to them. But I would say if by March 1st we start to move dirt around, I'd be thrilled.
I'd be concerned.
Huh?
I would be concerned about moving that much, that much dirt in March. Just, I would look at...
We may be, you know, it's terrible for the environment, but the lack of rain might benefit in the short term.
Right. Okay. I would just be concerned about that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, through this whole process, I mean, my first idea was that we could submit to you, like, by November 1st. I'm in the business, so I understand that things take time. We purchased a place in the summertime, and I already knew we were going to be coming up to the winter. So I knew that even if we were ready in December, had all the approvals, that we may not be able to go. So I'm, that's why I say hopefully by March 1st, but I'm not wedded to it, you know?
I would also say that if, if it does get going that quickly, we are aware that there are standards and measures that need to be taken until, I believe it's April 20th.
Right. Okay.
Yeah.
The other concern that I have, and I just wanted to bring it to your attention, is that we had a home here, I guess it was, I guess it was six months back, that was being approved, and they were very concerned about the roads. That area does not have a lot of good pavement in that area, so I would suggest you take all precautions you can to minimize the traffic and heavy equipment on those roads.
Going to do that, and then for sure, I don't know, we'll probably have to dig up in the front of the house anyway. I know that there's a sewer line that runs through the back of those lots, but I know that the, the home that looks like is most recently built on Livingston, it's about one or two up from the main road, they kind of just repaved the whole frontage of their house across the whole road, so I'm totally planning on doing that, too. I mean, I can't pave the whole road, but I can certainly...
That'd be lovely.
Everything out in front of me, because, you know, that's how I get up to our place now anyway, so you should try driving on Sterling if you want to.
And the other, the other comment that I had, you already answered, and that was whether or not you talked with the neighbors. And it sounds like, since you bought the piece of property from the neighbors, I'm, I'm sure you shared what you were doing with them, and it...
Yeah, and she was concerned, you know, she actually made me sign, she had a lawyer drop a document, but it was basically just the same rule as the city has anyway, which is 35 feet, and except above and beyond that. I really, you know, having lived down here, I mean, again, it can be the same for any neighborhood you move into, but I really have an appreciation for the historical nature of Pedro Point, especially like, not just, you know, within the larger universe, but within Pacifica, in that it is a small community, and it has been kind of on its own. I don't mean to say that it's like a separate, you know, it's not like West Hollywood from the rest of LA or anything like that, but it's, I appreciate the charms, and in no way did I, did myself or my wife want to come in there, like I said, and start sticking our finger in people's eyes and building these monstrosities and huge fences and everything like that, you know? We didn't come down here to be sequestered, you know? We came down here to be a part of the community. So I think that informed our design, but...
All right. Well, thank you for answering my questions. That's all I have.
I see no further questions from Commissioners. This would be the time for members of the audience to speak on the agenda item. Seeing no speaker cards.
Looks like there are some people.
If you could submit cards through the staff? Great, thank you. Mr. Holden?
[inaudible]
You have three minutes to speak about the project.
Hello, everybody. My name is Bob Holden. I live at 1416 Grand Avenue, which is the street parallel to Livingston on the other side, on the, on the eastern side. And I'm here to express a handful of concerns, five points, if I can go through them quickly. One is that the Pacifica building codes allow a 35-foot, 35-foot height to their buildings. And just to place on the record, that, as everybody knows, is the equivalent of three, three stories. And although there's a variety of houses that are already that height, it's just a huge height.
Too big for the area.
Second is that Pacifica does not have a view ordinance. And between the 35-foot height and the lack of a view ordinance, there are, there have been several houses that have built on that, been built on that Livingston corridor, for lack of a better term, that are just darn huge. And those darn huge houses have an impact on traffic density, and they also impact light and airflow, which are part of the design guidelines for the city of Pacifica. So to summarize, one, I encourage the Planning Commission to really think through that and how appropriate that 35-foot height is. Second, some thought has been, been stated about where in the lot that setback goes. And although the setback going towards the eastern side and giving the view to the house above is, is a terrific item for, for the woman who owns the house above, but it has a tremendous impact on the neighbors on the east side, on the back side. And between the 35-foot height and the back, and the offset that goes straight to the back creates a monster 35-foot wall. Finally, with the way that the ground is currently sits, I don't have a great understanding of how, where that 35-foot limit starts on the grading of the properties, it certainly, as it currently sits. And I would like to see the, the approval on the plan delayed until the excavation of that property, or the plan for the excavation of that property is finalized, so we can figure out where that 35-foot line starts, so that the neighbors going up and down on the backside don't end up looking at these huge, massive walls that sometimes can be 40 and 45 feet with respect to the grading and the size of the wall that's in there. So those are my concerns. Current thoughts on, on development guidelines? No understanding of how the property is going to be graded, and as a consequence of that, don't understand how that 35-foot peak will sit on the property as it is. So thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Holden. Mr. McDevitt?
Good evening. My name is Charles Dennis McDevitt. I'm at 1364 Grand Avenue. It'll be the property that is opposite the vacant lot that's being proposed for the building. I wanted to welcome the neighbors to the neighborhood, but I hear you're already here. So, so that's, that's fine. You're good and familiar with the neighborhood. I also had a, I also had some, some, some concerns. One of the things was, is I noticed this came out during or just before the holidays, and some of my neighbors, actually, even my next-door neighbor, didn't even receive anything on the, on the, on the proposal. I got it, but with people being in and out, I don't know how many people in the neighborhood were able to, during the holidays, I don't know how many people got that notice or didn't get it. A couple of things that were, again, I think Bob had also talked about the wall, 35-foot wall. I know 35 feet in the city of Pacifica is legal for a roof line, limit. I have probably pretty close to the same type of roof line. However, I have a peak roof, and my peak roof doesn't go to and fro, doesn't go from back to front, it goes transversely. So my 35-foot, in deference to the neighbors and everything else, when it was, I guess, designed and built, was the first floor came up approximately eight to 12 feet, or eight to 10 feet, wherever it comes up. From that point on, the roof goes in another direction for 45 degrees until the middle of the house. That means probably the peak of my roof is probably going to be 50 feet from the edge of their wall that comes straight up at 35 feet. So it was quite a difference in impact. Just one more thing was, I was wondering if we could look forward and maybe postpone this till enough neighbors had the information so they could formulate a couple of questions and maybe continue it to another, to another meeting. That's all. I know I'm out of time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McDevitt. Claire Irvin Lee?
Good evening. I'd also like to, to welcome the, I guess they're not really as new a neighbors as I thought they were, but I welcome them to the, the neighborhood and looking forward to getting to know them. I live at 1433 Grand Avenue, and one thing that caught my eye here was the mention of a fire pit in the backyard. Now, I wasn't aware until I moved into Pacifica and became friendly with Tina McDevitt, Dennis' wife, who's also here today, that burning in the area could cause really, really severe problems for people with conditions like Tina's, and, who has chronic bronchitis and pulmonary edema. That fire pit back out there will pretty much, if, if it's in use, make her housebound. I have a wood-burning stove that I no longer use because of her help in raising my awareness. And as you know, we've had a lot of spare-the-air days, and we've had a chance to look at the haze that can come over. So I'm wondering if something couldn't be negotiated about that fire pit to save not only her, but the other neighbors who have similar problems with, with breathing our air.
Great, thank you. Would the applicant or the owner like to respond to any of those comments and questions?
Yes, we do thank the neighbors for their comments and their concerns. I just wanted to clarify a couple items in regard to the, the fire pit. It is intended that the fire pit would be a gas fire pit, so there won't be any issues with wood-burning smoke or other particulates or, or other matters. And I just wanted to comment on the height of the building. The height of the building is within the allowable height, and it is necessary to be able to really take advantage of one of the major values of this property, which is the views. And to mitigate that, though, the setbacks that we've talked about and the relationship to other neighbors' primary views have been considered. And also, the overall width of the building, you know, it is about half the width of the lot. It's not the, the full width that could be built out. And these, these are measures that were taken to try and mitigate that mass. Thank you.
I have one thing, too, that, I know you all are familiar with it, but, you know, the 35 feet is from the lowest point, so the 35 feet starts at, all the way at the back of the house, so it's not actually 50 feet. We have that big mound of fill at the front of the lot, but really, so when you come into our house, you're going to be coming into the second floor. You know, we tried to work with that, but I just wanted to say that it's not going to be overall 50 feet. I mean, I don't, you know, I think we're maybe manipulating grade by like a foot in the backyard, but if that, so, anyway.
Great, thank you. With no further comments, I'd like to open it up to the Commission. Mr. Niblin?
Yeah, I was hoping I could ask staff to confirm. I'm sure Mr. Dwaras has it right, but I want to make sure I understand sort of this 35-foot issue and where it is that that 35 feet is actually measured from, whether it's the lowest side on the lot or some other...
The definition and the way we require them to measurement, to measure it is from the lowest point of the structure at finished grade to the topmost point of the roof. So the very bottom outside to the very top.
Thank you. And one other question, then, regarding the noticing requirements and the compliance with them in the context of this particular project. When did the notices go out? What was required to be done?
The notices, one of the notices actually went out a little bit early because of the holidays, so we did a mailer of all property owners within 300 feet of the property, all residents within 100 feet of the property boundaries. Those went out 10 days in advance. And then the site was posted with three notices, and notices also went to the public libraries. That was done 11 days in advance because I wasn't going to be here on the 10th day. And then there was a notice published in the public newspaper. I forget the exact date, it's in the staff report.
Okay.
December 24th, so it was a little early as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Viterlas?
I appreciate that the applicants did talk to the neighbors, and the fact that we don't have a view ordinance, and yet you still respected the view of the neighbors, and the fact that the way you placed the house on the lot to respect other people, and also the living roof, which I haven't seen, and I think that's a great addition to the project, and I like the project.
Great.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Vidalas?
I appreciate that the applicants did talk to the neighbors and the fact that we don't have a view ordinance and yet you still respected the view of the neighbors and the fact that the way you placed the house on the lot to respect other people. And also the living roof, which I haven't seen, and I think that's a great addition to the project. And I like the project.
Great. Commissioner Campbell?
It's kind of a question for staff. I know we have mega home ordinance. And can you just explain how this, this has come close to the trigger or not? Or how does it comport with it?
The trigger is 2,800 square feet. If the home on a lot that, that is the size were 2,800 square feet or greater, it wouldn't prohibit the applicant from constructing it. What it would do is necessitate an additional permit. So you would also have the opportunity to view or review a site development permit.
And the garage doesn't, isn't included in that 2,800?
No. There is a separate threshold for the garage. I believe it's 650 square feet and this one is a little over 400.
Okay. Second question, if I might. The applicant mentioned that he could have built a larger house with the size of the lot as it is. How much larger? Do you, can you guess on that?
Well, I would say that the larger that he may be referring to, and he could probably answer this better, would be that 2,800 square feet. At which point, again, it would require an additional layer of review, but conceivably he could go beyond that if the planning commission were willing to approve it.
Thank you.
I have two questions for staff. One, do you know the rear setback and the ridgeline height for the property below and above on Livingston?
No, not offhand. The applicant might have that information.
Okay. Thank you. And then, do you have a suggestion on how to handle Commissioner Cooper's concern about the wording on that condition 17 to reflect rather, there's, there's nothing to replace?
We noted that change. I mean, that's a standard condition that we receive from Public Works. Rather than say existing sidewalk, it'll say a new sidewalk. It will need to be constructed pursuant to those same standards.
That's great. Thank you. And I'm going to slip in a third one before Campbell gets his second round. I thought I saw something that said that you're required to pave the road to 18 feet out. Did I miss that in one of the conditions? Isn't that a standard condition about?
It's condition number 14. To the center line.
Oh, there you go. Right. Perfect. Great. Thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
I saw a reference in the staff report to the 4,000 square foot home that we'd previously approved. I was wondering, when was that?
I don't know the exact year, but I know that it was shortly before I started working here, which was in 2005, or it was right around that time. So it was a while ago and it was prior to the mega home ordinance.
Thank you.
Great. Seeing no further questions from the Commissioners, wondering if we're ready to make a motion? Commissioner Evelyn?
Well, I'm ready to move the, the recommended motion here in the, in the staff report that the planning commission find that the project is exempt from SEQA, approve coastal development permit CDP 34114 by adopting the attack, attached resolution for the proposed single-family dwelling at 1375 Livingston Avenue, including conditions of approval in Exhibit A and incorporate all maps and testimony into the record by reference.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
Just to get it on the record, I do, I do appreciate the applicant's green building and the plans, which were, which were thorough. And on the other hand, I do appreciate the neighbors' comments. And what we've got here is a home that appears to meet the requirements of the, the planning and zoning and doesn't trigger the mega home ordinance, which is something that we're very much concerned with and, and, you know, when we pass that. I'm not seeing any engineering concerns and we don't have a view ordinance, which is something that maybe someday we could think about considering, especially when you're up on the point. Although I'm not hearing that views are being wiped out by this home. So that's, unless I got that wrong. So I, I'm, I'm mindful of the neighbors' concerns and I'm also mindful of the fact that we've got a home that's meeting all the requirements and I'm not, you know, it becomes difficult for the planning commission to deny a project when we don't have very good grounds to do so. So, and again, it's a nice looking home. So I'm in favor of it.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Vidalas?
I was going to second the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Cooper?
She beat me with the punch.
Very well. I have a second. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Anyone agreed by the action of the planning commission has 10 calendar days to appeal the decision in writing to the city council. If any of the above actions are challenged in court, issues may be raised or limited to those raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Judicial review of any city administrative decision may be had only if a petition is filed with the court, not later than the 90th day following the date upon which the decision becomes final. Thank you. As there are no other agenda items, I move on to the communications section. Any commission communications? All right. Well, Happy New Year, anyone, everyone. Any staff communications?
We just wanted to wish the commission a Happy New Year and look forward to a productive year with you all. Thanks.
Great. And then oral communications. This portion of the agenda is available to the public to address the planning commission on any issue within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda. This time is allowed for any, the time allowed for any speaker will be three minutes. Seeing no speakers, I'd like to see if we have a motion to adjourn. Commissioner Cooper?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion. All vote. Vote is unanimous. Meeting adjourned.